Questions, concerns as regards to the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Thank you. Communications, Laurie.
There's a letter from Steve Gerard regarding Chapter 21, Section 8 of the municipal code.
Thank you. I know Steve will have an opportunity to appear here at the Citizens' Comments. I do want to thank Steve for the thoroughness of any letter I've ever received while in office as an older person or as the mayor.
I concur.
Wow. I was thoroughly impressed by his ability to look at every angle. He left no stone unturned, and it was a wonderful...I learned a lot, and I'm interested to hear what he has if he chooses to address us in the three glorious minutes that he will get next, which is appearances in Citizen Comments. But first, we have one scheduled, John and Robert Nightingale, to appear to present a donation toward updated play equipment at a city park. And I believe our Director of Park and Rec will be taking that, along with our upcoming Park and Rec Director. Thank you.
I'm real happy to have John Nightingale...oh, is that better?
Much better.
John Nightingale do a presentation in a short minute from now. John reached out to me about three months ago. Out of the blue, I got a call and started giving me some history of when he lived in Hartford and talked about wanting to make a donation to the Parks Department. We talked about some various possible ideas, and then he focused in on a particular area. I don't want to seal any of his thunder. His brother, Robert, is not here, but I let John take over, and he brought a couple other guests with him, so.
Hi, good evening. So, my name's John Nightingale. I'm Larry Nightingale's son, and some old timers might remember Larry. He was Director of Public Works here from '56 to maybe '73 or something like that. I'm not sure.
Honestly, I don't know exactly.
Okay. But we grew up on Lincoln Avenue between Grand and Main Street, and Larry and his wife Gertrude lived here for many, many years. Larry passed away in 2010, and Gertrude passed away last year. And my brother, Robert, and I thought it would be appropriate to make a donation to the city parks to improve the quality of life for citizens in Hartford. And in particular, our children came to Candy Cane Park, which is like a block and a half from where my parents lived. And we thought that would be an appropriate location for a donation. And I had a nice dialogue with Mike, and it seemed to work out pretty well. He said, "You were planning on doing that a couple years, so this might accelerate that improvement." So, my brother and I have written some checks for $50,000 for play equipment, and I'm hoping that the city will accept that. I will give it to Mike unless there's any objections. Let me just comment. My brother's very shy, but his daughters Nora and Nia are here. They live in Kansas now, and I live in California, and I've had a great couple days here in Hartford. We're taking off tomorrow, so I'm so glad that I was able to attend the council meeting. My dad spent many, many evenings at meetings at the City Hall. So, thank you for your work for the citizens of Hartford.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we need a picture?
Oh, absolutely.
Just to wrap it up, so Candy Cane, the Park and Rec Commission, was over there on the tour. It was in our capital improvement schedule, our five-year schedule. This certainly helps us as we look at that capital improvement schedule and what we're going to do with $50,000. So, I'll be turning this over to Randy Wataszek for design and development of the new playground, and he will keep in contact with John to just update him periodically. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, for appearances in Citizen Comments, this is a time where anybody who wishes from the city to address anything that would be specific to the city, please come up and state your name, your address, your city address, and you get three glorious minutes.
Very good. Jimmy Dennis, 34 Church Street, Hartford. I'm here to discuss a matter regarding property maintenance standards, Section 29.04. Section 3, B3, all solid waste containers stored outside shall be visibly screened from view. A pass-through is a means of being placed within containment structure visually and structurally compatible with principal building or by means of containment. Areas screened from view by dense vegetation growth structural materials which are visibly compatible with principal structure. This refers to 52 South Main Street, Domino's Pizza, St. Vincent De Paul. They currently have all their dumpsters placed on the outside of the building next to my garage, which is creating a rodent problem. They do not have them contained as it states according to this ordinance. We are requesting this county council take a look at this. It's becoming a big problem. The smell, the rodents, the mice. We've had problems now in our garage, and likewise with our neighbor. They've had to hire exterminators because of it. I have pictures here for you to look at.
You can just give them to the city administrator. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding the...anything that would come up? This is your time for chatting. Just come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you get three glorious minutes.
Hi. Hello. My name's John Casson. I live at 1731 Redtail Drive in the northwest part of the city. I'm just in support of amending the ordinance to allow backyard chickens in the city. I have heard that Steve was going to...that this matter was going to be addressed. Just like to say that, you know, I have a large vegetable garden in my backyard. I live pretty close to other farming-type structures near the city, and it's perfectly fine with me. I like to grow some of my own vegetables. My kids are very engaged with it. The neighborhood kids are as well, and I think it would be really exciting if I can get some chickens and able to produce my own eggs and be able to coexist with the garden. I think it's a very excellent idea. Emphasis on the egg part. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Just come up to the microphone. Last call. Anybody else wishing to speak? Hearing none, we go to the mayor's report. My statement, very simply, is that I know that we're going to be addressing the public utility...or, excuse me, the resolution to possible action for approving the 2023 budget policy. I figured in the mayor's report, I'll just bring it up here, that I understand that there's a lot of work to be done. I agree with what the folks did regarding looking at moving ahead on another thing that's going to be coming up, which is adding a new full-time parks cemetery equipment operator, since we've gone 43 years without an addition. And it's been pointed out that we're going to be...it's well over 40 years since there's been an increase, and there's been quite an increase in the population of the city and the number of parks. My thing is that, and I've been contacted by a number of different folks in the city, that inflation is really hitting everybody. It not only hits the city, but it hits individuals. And I just want to go on record that making sure that we're looking very seriously at doing everything that we can to hold the line on spending in the budget. And I'm just making an official announcement that if we're raising taxes in the city of Hartford, you will be voting against a veto. I will veto any budget that raises taxes this year. I will not go ahead and increase the taxes when we have double-digit inflation that's crushing some of the people in the city of Hartford. They've made me very aware of that, and I absolutely agree with them. So, my challenge to city administration is to make sure that we do everything possible to live within our means. We've had literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in ARPA funds that have helped, and I understand that there's very limited use as to what can be done. But we've had a lot of money flowing in and out of the city, in and out of the state, in and out of the county, and I just want to make sure that everyone knows upfront that there's no secret that even before we discuss the resolution approving the budget policy, that we need to tighten our belts because there are a lot of people starting to really hurt in the city. And I'm voting for them. So, or I can't vote, actually, as a mayor, but I can sign the paper or stamp the paper, and I will make sure that I do my part, and I would hope that the council does there. So, thank you very much. With that, we go to aldermanic requests. Older persons, we start with President Hegi.
Okay. First off, I wanted to express thanks to the Nightingale family for their very generous donation. We don't see something like that come through very often. That's really appreciated. And again, with trying to help with the budgeting, that's a great thing. As far as the discussion about chickens, I know West Bend recently changed their ordinance, so we might want to check with them and see what they've got going on there, just for future reference. And lastly, Maxwell Street Days are tomorrow, all around downtown Hartford, including Main Street, Schubert's Theater, and at Sawyer Park, and that's between 10:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. So, come on down to downtown Hartford and shop and enjoy the festivities.
Thank you very much. Alderperson Rosniak.
I also would like to thank the Nightingale family for that wonderful $50,000 donation. I've been in Hartford long enough to remember Larry Nightingale, and I think Dennis has been in Hartford longer than I have to remember Larry Nightingale as their city.
Dennis here.
I don't remember. I don't remember. Either way, wonderful donation from that family.
Thank you. Alderperson Carroll.
Just a thanks to the Nightingales. That's wonderful.
Thank you. Alderperson Turchi.
Nothing to nightmare.
Alderperson Philip.
Wow, is all I got to say to both the Nightingale brothers. And I think Mike, you know, I hope we put some placard in there recognizing, you know, their tribute to their father and their family with respect to the dedication that he gave to the Hartford community. So, very, 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 very nice and blew my away. So, thank you very much to that family.
You bet. Thank you very much. Next, we have standing committee reports, finance and personnel. Chairman Rosniak.
One item tonight, excuse me, discussion and consideration of the addition of one new full-time parks cemetery equipment operator position as part of the 2023 city budget. Steve, you taking this?
I'll start. I'll start with it and have Mike and Randy jump in. Again, as I've been talking about for the last year, one of the goals for 2023 was to review the operations in the different departments that have been lacking in employment to maintain those different areas. One of the areas was engineering. We've talked about that several times regarding our storm water permit, which, again, we've lacked in having the personnel to be able to handle all the issues that the DNR is throwing at us with our MS4 permit. We also, again, are looking at IT help with the move of one of our temporary part-time IT people to police chief. That has lessened our availability of IT people. And then third and finally, another one area is building maintenance with, again, us putting a great deal of taxpayers' money into improving this building, including the addition of the Veterans Hall, having the personnel to be able to maintain these buildings in which they put a ton of money into. And then finally, parks. Parks, as you'll see and have read in that report, has been a lack of additional personnel since last time we had somebody was in the '70s. I was still in grade school at that time. And we've yet added a ton of more parks and also a lot more people using the parks. And one of the number-one complaints that we receive at the council, at City Hall, is for maintaining and/or improving parks. So, this is the first one that we're bringing across, which, again, is for a new parks employee. And Mike is here to talk more about the need.
Okay. What I would ask Mike before you start, only because of the fact that I took the time, and I know that at least the people here, I know, read their thing and are very thorough in reading this. I'm going to guess, although I've not talked to any of them, given that you've put out a very good thing, that you're going to get a unanimous vote anyway. Okay? That being the case, because I think we all support it, and a number of the members here were on the counter, we don't need a 20-minute presentation, okay? Because it's available online, which is why we make it available online, so everybody can read it. We all read it, and I know that because of the length and the time it took me to read it, it's like this is a Mike Herman halo, because you could, and I very well, you know, spend an incredible amount of time on it. You've got the votes already. Knowing that, go.
Mayor, I really wanted to read word for word.
Well, you still can.
Took two minutes at our finance meeting.
I know. I was there.
I'll just say, within the executive summary, there's different sections. One is the draft that Steve had department heads prepare, and there's a lot of questions in there, and I responded to those, and I think there's strong support. In particular, Sections 10, 11, and 13, if you read those, I think they highlight the issues and the problems. I also included our copy of what is our monthly report that I give to the Park and Rec Commission. The work on that is park by park, and I can tell you many things have been sitting out there for five-plus years, not getting done. And the last part, I think pictures can say volumes, and I think the pictures show the struggles we're having up, just keeping up with general maintenance. Randy's here as well, and he'll have to take over this. Randy's got experience in parks, and I want to say that I think Randy started in the Parks Department in 1999 or 2000 as a summer park maintenance worker, and then came back 2003 as our recreation supervisor, and now is back again. So, he has hands-on experience with the work in the Parks Department as well. That's all I'll say, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Like I said, it was an extraordinarily thorough report. Thank you. I mean, that was as good as the chicken letter. I mean, it really was. Go ahead, Alderperson Turchi.
So, I caught some of the meeting before this. Is it my understanding that we've supplemented the lack of hiring additional full-time equivalents by part-time equivalents during this period of time?
I would say we probably put a Band-Aid on top of a Band-Aid on top of a Band-Aid for 40 years, and it's getting to the point where, first of all, the Band-Aids aren't there anymore because part-time employees are so tough to come by. And second of all is the fact of it still isn't handling all of the issues. Thus, you see the pictures that you have.
Right. So, that was my interpretation of the prior meeting.
Yeah.
Right? So, is it the intention when we go to budget for 2023 that we might be able to reduce some of the part-time help by bringing on a full-time equivalent?
It's definitely one of the things that we're looking to do. It's almost because we're forced to, because we can't get the people to show...to do it anyway. So, yeah, if...and so much of our work, I mean, when we hire summer kids, it's like, well, I can get there after high school's over or after college, and I gotta leave by middle of August because you gotta report back to college by that time.
You get a good eight weeks out of them.
Yeah. It's...yeah, it's not...it's obviously not working.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Alderperson Philip.
So, Jeff was listening, and I think that's where I was going, Steve. So, I brought up a couple of items of, you know, can we use contractors? Do we have other options to do this rather than taking such a big burden? And that's where I was headed with the overtime, because I, you know, how do we offset this? I think I'm with the mayor on, you know, keeping the budget absolutely flat if we can, and, you know, it's a good challenge to you, Steve, on how we're going to come up with that magic number, given the economic conditions of 2023 and what we think it's going to be. But at the end of the day, I mean, I clearly support this initiative as you indicated. It's just how do we get there, and what do we need to do to gain efficiencies? And, you know, you mentioned that you started with two extra, and you went to five, and I think you went to seven now on temporary summer help, right? So, how can we look at offsetting that with this full-timer if that works out with the finances? And then, I'm with you. When you bring somebody in in the summer, you're not going to get the same efficiencies as you are of a dedicated full-time guy. So, hope we can come up with a balance on that. So, that's where I'm at.
And with the same fact, we, you know, I think we have to look at the other side of the equation, which is, there's an awful lot of projects I truly believe that we have the expertise to be able to do, but we're hiring firms to come in and do some of these things. Past experience, previous community, I had nine parks.
They have 11 full-time now and 10 part-seasonal.
Oh, okay. So, I know what you're talking about. So, anyways, so Park and Forestry in West Bend is, like you said, 11 people. They're able to do projects that, right now, we have to hire everyone to do, and that's expensive. And I'd love to be able to get out of contracting out for everything that we're doing because we're not...because we have the people that could do it. We have the machinery that can do some of this stuff. We just don't have the time to do it.
Joe?
Yeah. I'm actually glad you brought that up, right? Because when I got on council, I read it quite clearly on what I shouldn't poke my nose into, and it's your business, right? So, I absolutely agree with that. I think you've got to find the balance of what you do on the outside versus what you can internalize as a set of capabilities you have within-house. I've seen your garage. I've seen, you know, other areas with respect to electrical and other items. So, yeah, I'm curious to see what you come up with, Steve, but I would support that type of initiative to offset external contract expenses and figure out how you're going to do it with an internal team. Because what I saw in the photos on Mike is a diverse set of challenges, whether he's going to do masonry, whether he's going to do electrical, whether he's going to do some of those other elements, which even given the inflation, you know, we're not paying the same amount for outside services as we have been before. So, yeah, thank you for that.
So, Steve and Randy, assuming this might pass tonight, you have a challenge ahead of you. You guys work this out and figure out how we can afford to do this. Any other questions or comments? If not, now back to you, Mayor.
Thank you for your patience. Chairman Rosniak, with that, would look for a motion to move ahead with the okay of a one full-time parks cemetery equipment operator position as part of the 2023 city budget. Alderperson Philip, seconded by Alderperson Rosniak.
Motion by Alderperson Philip, seconded by Alderperson Rosniak, approving the addition of one new full-time parks cemetery equipment operator position as part of the 2023 city budget.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Thank you.
And just to be clear, Mayor, before you get off the topic.
Yes.
Again, we, again, will present the budget in the coming months, and then if the entire budget is approved, we would go ahead and hire somebody. So, we wouldn't be looking to hire someone till, you know, like, to start looking at the process till November, December, after you've approved the budget in your first meeting in November. So, if anyone is interested, please wait until November, December, till we know for a fact that we can afford it.
Excellent point. Thank you very much.
I do have something.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So, Steve, just out of the clear blue, there might be a perfect candidate that walks in the door next week. Is there a process for us to potentially hire that person outside the budget?
The staff would have to come back and show you how we can do it. We have savings somewhere, somehow, stealing from Peter to pay Paul kind of thing.
Okay.
For a temporary person, yeah. So, if you're looking for a job, Jeff, we will try to fit you in sooner.
I thought Randy was starting gratis for the first year, isn't that what we're talking about?
One would never...one never knows, Steve.
That's right.
One never knows.
Okay. Thank you. Item number 10, resolutions and possible action. This is Resolution Number 3633, a resolution approving the 2023 budget policy. You had the executive summary attached. I've read through it completely. I'm sure you have. I even brought a hard copy of this. So, with that, we hand it off to our city administrator, Steve Holker.
So, again, on an annual basis, this is not statutorily that we need to do this, but again, it is our past that we've always presented something that, again, helps to give staff direction as to what, how, where they'd like to go in regards to the budget that'll be presented in the coming months. So, again, you see the policies that have put out there. Again, this is a draft, so if there's some changes or additions or change, you know, things that you see that we might have missed or things like that, it, again, just gives us direction when we present the budget, like I said, in the coming months.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? This is very similar, if not almost identical, other than doing a word find to change the year of what we had last year. President Hegi.
Yes. This has been in place for many years. It hasn't changed very much through the years, but I would like to propose a slight addition to it, and that would be on item nine on page A9. And that particular line says, "The city will continue to support a roadway repair replacement policy which places highest priority on roadways of greatest age and highest traffic count." And I spoke with the city engineer, and the words that I would like to add to that would be especially those with deficient underground utilities. I don't want to propose any type of changes to anything other than this will help give guidance as to which streets get looked at. It's...they do that currently. That's what was explained to me. It is looked at that way to begin with, but as time goes on, different people look at this, and that's what we need to do, is make sure that it's a comprehensive street repair. So...
I don't know that we would have to vote on...I'm good with that verbiage being added. I think that we can certainly just add that.
So, do we need to do it as an amendment, or just add it in there and pass it?
We can add, if that's the pleasure of the council to add it, I have no problem with you.
Yeah, I see everybody's head nodding. I don't...
It's a request.
Right. I'm good.
Sure. We're all good.
Super. Okay.
Other than that, no, it's fine. It's the way it's been.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? We're going to get another kick at the can at this, aren't we, if we...
This is it.
This is it. Okay. No can kicking, so.
No can kicking.
I'm good with the direction.
All right. With that, would look for a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by President Hegi.
Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Hegi for the adoption of proposed Resolution 3633.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. For adjournment, Alder... Opposed, no. Motion carried. For adjournment, alderperson...boy, they're all missing. I get the understanding, okay. Alderperson Turchi, seconded by alderperson Carroll.
Motion by alderperson Turchi, seconded by alderperson Carroll for adjournment at 7:32.
For adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.